Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, May 25, 2021. It is 9:01 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. We have Commissioner Carolina Mejia, County Manager Miro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and I see our County Treasurer Jeff Gabman, as well as key staff members for particular items. That will come up in the work session. The public can follow along through our county YouTube channel. Commissioner and Vice Chair Gary Edwards just joined. And we also have a conference line option at 360-252-9020. The PIN for that is 1234. Item number one this morning is our standing COVID-19 update. I see Shelley Slaughter, our Director of Public Health and Social Services. I'll go straight to Shelley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today is day 475 of Thurston County's COVID-19 emergency response. In Washington State, to date, there have been 429,499 confirmed cases of COVID-19 and 5,709 Washingtonians that have lost their lives. This includes 9,966 Thurston County residents that have tested positive for COVID-19 and 105 Thurston County residents that have died. In the last week, we've had 316 new cases. That puts us at 198.6 on the Governor's Risk Assessment Dashboard per our population size over the last two weeks. Our test positivity rate has gone down a little bit this last week, currently at 8.25%, so that is encouraging. We do have testing available and strongly encourage people to get tested if they are exposed to someone with COVID-19 or experiencing symptoms. We are at Rochester Organization of Families from 10 to 1 today with free COVID testing at Lacy Union Gospel Mission and Evergreen State College the rest of this week, and people can check out our schedule on the website. In terms of congregate care outbreaks, we've had 58 to date and four that our team are currently investigating. 561 Thurston County residents have been hospitalized to date with six new hospitalizations in the last week. We're also seeing a little bit of encouraging news in terms of hospitalizations. While our regional hospital capacity is at 90%, 11% of those acute beds are occupied by COVID patients and 19% of our regional ICU beds are occupied by COVID patients. In our Thurston County hospitals, 21 inpatient, there are 21 inpatient people with COVID and one currently that is on a ventilator. In vaccination news to date in Thurston County, all of our Thurston County vaccine providers have administered 245,675 doses of COVID-19. This is really great and we're making a lot of progress in terms of total number of Thurston County residents that have initiated a first dose of a COVID-19 vaccine that stands at 45.51%. And our total population of Thurston County residents vaccinated is at 38.4%. Another important metric is those 16 and over, which is part of how the state of Washington is measuring our progress in terms of people who have initiated vaccinations in Thurston County that are age 16 and over. We are at 56.38%. Goal is to get to 70% by June 30th. And fully vaccinated 16 and older is at 47.58%. So we have some work to do. We have seen some vaccine hesitancy in our community. Our vaccination sites have plenty of vaccine, lots of appointments, and also you don't have to make an appointment if you don't want to make an appointment at most of our events. We are tonight at our South Pigeon Sound Community College drive-through from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. administering Pfizer. So anyone who would like Pfizer should come on over to the college, College of the CE this afternoon and evening, 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. We also have several different mobile clinics that we are offering this week. We will be at Union Gospel Mission tomorrow, and we have a new mobile site at the Capitol Mall. So out in the parking lot on the Sephora side of the building, we will have our mobile vaccination unit on the 27th and 28th this week administering Johnson &amp; Johnson between 1:00 and 5:00 p.m. I encourage anyone looking for a vaccine appointment to check out our Thurston County Public Health and Social Services website and Vaccine Locator. And with that, I will answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Mejia?
Yeah, so we are requiring appointments now?
No, Commissioner, we do not require appointments. We offer appointments. We have found that some people prefer to have an appointment because it helps them to have a specific time that they can go and not have to wait in a really, a really long line and they can get steam faster. But appointments are not required, but they are available. So you can show up or you can make an appointment at our clinics.
Have we seen a rise in demand for vaccination?
Since a 12 to 15-year-old became eligible, we have seen an increased demand for Pfizer vaccine, which is available for anyone ages 12 and over, and we strongly recommend that. So we have seen a lot of people seeking the Pfizer vaccine as of late. We're starting to see that, you know, kind of go down a little bit again as many, many kids have had the opportunity to get vaccinated, but we still have lots and lots of vaccine available to meet those needs.
Thank you.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes. Is there any chance you could clarify some of the confusion on what the Governor has given out as to you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, but if you're in a, you know, medical facility, you do? And all of that stuff, could you clear up some of the confusion around what some of the requirements are?
I will sure try, Commissioner Edwards. I understand it is really confusing to the public. There's a lot of different guidance out there and it can be really hard to, hard to understand what that is. Overall, people who are fully vaccinated, so they are two weeks after their last dose of Pfizer or Moderna are considered fully vaccinated, or two weeks after the Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is a one-dose series, are considered fully vaccinated. People who are fully vaccinated are not required to wear masks in certain settings. So outdoor and indoor settings unless there is a local health officer or workplace restriction. There are certain industries and sectors that do have to continue to wear masks regardless of their vaccination status. That includes healthcare settings, correctional settings, homeless shelters, and other types of congregate settings. And there's a list of those, those settings on the Governor's website. And I know that Washington State Department of Labor and Industries continues to roll out industry-specific guidance to answer questions that people have. So I encourage people to check out that website as well if they are wondering what applies to them.
How about restaurants? What's the deal with restaurants?
Restaurants fall, fall in the general guidance. So people who are fully vaccinated do not have to wear a mask in the restaurant unless the restaurant has, has chosen to enforce other restrictions and they, under the guidance, they have the right to do so.
Well, at any time, anybody is welcome to wear a mask if they think it's necessary. Is that right?
Yes, absolutely. And we appreciate that people continue to, continue to wear masks. In public places, we have a lot of kids in our community that aren't even quite eligible yet for vaccines. And, you know, as you heard in my report, our COVID cases in Thurston County are still, are still quite high. When we look at what our total fully vaccinated population is at this point, it's only at 38%. So there's a lot of people that don't yet have their COVID vaccine in Thurston County. So people could expect to see a lot of masks for a while still.
I guess I would like to see at some point the confusion alleviated. And the reason I say that is because I think that's part of the reason people are hesitant to get the shot. They're, they're confused about, okay, I get the shot, wait two weeks, then I'm somewhat immune. I guess there's no such thing as complete immunity, but isn't it up there like 95 and 98%? You're not likely to come down with this virus if you've been adequately vaccinated?
Yes, sir. The vaccines that we have available are very effective at protecting people from getting COVID as well as transmitting COVID. So vaccines are very effective and that is part of the reason why that the CDC, after doing research on the effectiveness of the vaccine and the likelihood of people getting severely, severely ill or transmitting COVID-19 was not as much as previously had feared. So they felt like it was safe to recommend that people cannot wear their masks because we do want people to have the, have the benefit of, of being fully vaccinated and feeling safe and comfortable to, to be out in the community. The challenge that we have is that many people in our community in Thurston County are not yet vaccinated yet, and we don't have a way to, to know who and who is not yet vaccinated. So what we're really trying to do is get to that 70% at least. That's what we believe to be a good number for herd immunity. We're not certain of that yet. But that's the goal that we're looking for. And I think once we get to that point, then I think that we'll really start to, start to see people being able to, to return to more a normal semblance of, of life this summer, hopefully here in Thurston County. But we really need people that have not got vaccinated yet, on the edge, to please get vaccinated. These are safe, effective vaccines, and they will help us to get back to normal faster.
Just one follow-up. Last week, I think I heard one of those professional sports teams here in Washington, several of the players had come down, at least were tested positive. Do you know, were those folks that had been vaccinated, are we, are those maybe are people that chose not to get vaccinated?
I don't know about those, that specific sports team or those people. We do know that the vaccines are not always 100, they're not 100% effective. And there have been breakthrough cases that we've been seeing of people who are fully vaccinated that still do get, that still do get COVID. So that's something that's being researched, researched right now.
And if they do come down with COVID, what, they just don't get as sick? Is that what the deal is?
Yes, that's what we have found with the, with the vaccines. Illness is not as severe, not as likely to lead to hospitalization and really effective at preventing death.
And then there is something about the employer being able to ask employees if they've had their shot or something. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Maybe, Ramiro, I'll have to...
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
I'll just make a couple of comments and I'll pass it to the County Manager. For me, the confusion, I think, lies in the fact that when we say not required to wear a mask in this or that situation, what we're saying is not required by the state government. And that's a limit, I mean, an employer, a restaurant, a business could still have that requirement. There's also confusion that when the CDC, people don't really know, frankly, I don't 100% know what this authority of the CDC is. The CDC says X. What does that mean? That's not necessarily applicable then to every locality and state. State governments have authority to, I would imagine, rely on that guidance, but I don't think the CDC's shifting guidance automatically changes the rules in every county across America. So that's confusing to people. The rules that have been promulgated at this point only work if we know that people are vaccinated. So, you know, if I were, if I owned a restaurant and I had to manage this situation, I would just keep the mask in place. Everybody's used to it. And then I don't have the burden of trying to ask people whether they're vaccinated. And I'm imagining a lot of businesses are going to follow that. I've already seen it around. A lot of businesses are following that. It's just simpler. It's too complicated when we don't have, you know, a reliable and easy and accepted way to sort people through out. So there is a lot of confusion out there and hopefully we'll get that sorted out and people get vaccinated as fast as possible to get, so we don't have to worry about it anymore. Ramiro?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Allow me to elaborate on Commissioner Edwards' question. And last week, I stated that we were waiting for labor industries to provide some guidance and requirements to local governments. That came out last Friday. And let me review pieces of that that I think is along the lines of the conversation you're having this morning. What is new on this requirement is fully vaccinated employees do not have to wear a mask or socially distance unless their employer or local public health officer still requires it. Before ending mask and social distance requirements, employers must confirm workers are fully vaccinated by having the worker either sign a document, a testing to their status, or provide proof of vaccination. Employers must be able to demonstrate they have verified vaccination status for workers who are not masked or physically distanced. When verifying the employee's vaccine status, acceptable documentation includes a CDC vaccination card, a photo of the card, documentation from the healthcare provider, or a signed attestation from the worker. Employers are required to keep documentation of this verification as evidence and be, make it available when LNI request this, is as a, as a proof of implementation of this new requirement. I had initial meeting with Dr. Malik, Shelley, Robin on Friday afternoon. We discussed this guidance. As a result, I sent an email to county employees late afternoon, late on Friday, stated the new guidance. And also stated in my email this week, we're going to be, develop a process as to how to we're going to be implementing the new requirements imposed by LNI. This, this afternoon, I have a follow-up meeting with a public health officer, Dr. Abdem Malik, Shelley, and Robin. And tomorrow, I'll have a joint meeting with elected officials and appointing directors just to make sure that all of us are on the same page. And my, I'm expecting to send guidance or processes in place by this Thursday so we can start implementing these new requirements next Tuesday after the Labor Day, after the Memorial Day holiday. So that will be Monday, Tuesday, June 1st. So with that in mind, I'm expecting that perhaps the board members will be more than welcome if she'll prove a vaccination to join the Room 280 with no masks and in no social distance.
Chair, could I have a follow-up on that particular statement, please?
Yes, sir.
This would be maybe for Shelley or the doctor, I don't know. Under the HIPAA regulations that everybody's worried about, so private citizens or a private business, there's no restriction that, on asking about medical information, but there is by government? So how does that fit in? Do you have any explanation for the public out there?
Sure, I will certainly, certainly try. I am a HIPAA certified professional, but by no means an expert in federal HIPAA laws. But HIPAA applies to the transmission of protected medical information for certain entities that are covered by HIPAA. So that is not all general, general businesses in the community. Each business is different in terms of what their, whether they fall under HIPAA or not depending on the type of information that they handle and transmit. Asking someone such as a member of the public to show their proof of vaccination does not fall under HIPAA. Retaining and transmitting medical information that was protected by a covered entity under HIPAA would be. However, that is not, that is not the most common for all businesses. What does apply to everyone is the American with Disabilities Act. And so no one can inquire as to what type of medical conditions that a person, that a person may have as to why they were not vaccinated or something of that nature. But we have heard from the, the state confirming this that asking for proof of vaccination status and showing the vaccine card is not a violation of ADA or HIPAA, as far as what we were told. Of course, I defer to legal, legal counsel for further details on that because that's not the kind of advice that I can give. But I can share that that's what we have been told, that is what our understanding is. And I think that the guidance that has been given out by Washington State Department of Labor and Industries is consistent with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Appreciate you. Home strategies update is next on the agenda, and I see Keely Marino.
Good morning, Commissioners. Keely Marino with Public Health and Social Services. Here to give you a brief report largely around our updates on rental assistance programs that we have going on in the county. First of all, for Community Action Council's numbers this week, I would, I'm pleased to report that 310 households have been served, about 531 are in process. So just waiting for those checks to go through to the landlords, and there are 707 other appointments. So quite a number of households being served. They've, they've paid out about $2 million already in rental assistance and around $35,000 in utility assistance. Community Services also has a contract to serve youth and young adults, and of course, it's a smaller pool. So their households, they've served so far about 12, 12 more in process, and there's about 15 appointments that haven't, that have been scheduled. They've paid out about $108,000 in rental assistance, however, to those 12 households and utility assistance to the tune of 500 or about $600 so far for those young people in housing. And then we've also, we're reached out to by an agency here in Thurston County, which is called Port of Support, and it's facilitated and run by, has BIPOC leadership. And they've reached out to us to ensure that we are indeed doing our due diligence in reaching out to the Black African-American community for rental assistance. So we are engaging in, with them to ensure that, that we are doing as much as we possibly can to ensure that outreach is going into that community as well. Other updates will sound very familiar. Tomorrow is a Regional Housing Council meeting at 4:00 p.m. till 5:30. That meeting will be a presentation of the, the funding recommendations made by the technical review team and the Regional Housing Council, Council's funders work group for all of the funds going out for this funding cycle. So I know that many people are curious about that, and it is a public meeting. The link to that meeting to be in attendance and to watch will be, is on the website for Thurston County Regional Housing Council. So if you Google that, it'll pop right up. And then we will be on the 8th of June coming before the Board of County Commissioners with the scattered site proposal with the agency that we are talking with and that has been, at this point, preliminarily chosen to execute that contract, but that is forthcoming. So you'll be getting a full report on the 8th of June, but just giving you a heads up. And other than that, we are, that's it for our homeless report today.
Ms. Mejia?
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Edwards?
No, sir. County Manager's got his hand up there, sir.
After Commissioner Menter.
Keely, can you mention the, repeat the name of the group you said you're partnering with regarding outreach to African-American community? I didn't touch the name.
Yes, it's called Port of Support.
Port of Support. And is that outreach to youth or family or families? I couldn't remember if that fell into the youth category you were...
No, I think it's general outreach. So they do serve youth and young adults, but they also serve the, just folks, BIPOC community at large.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Keely. All right. Let's go on to item three.
Commissioner, could I?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ramiro.
That's all right. Hey, Keely, can you elaborate? You were featured on a Q and Five News segment in coordination, I believe, with volunteers as well as the City of Olympia, where you reached out a homeless camp to issue vaccinations. Can you elaborate on that effort?
Absolutely. Thanks for reminding me. So over the last several months, I've been working with a group of providers, homeless service providers, and the Olympia Free Clinic to arrange for outreach events to encampments to ensure that they get, have access to vaccine, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So Olympia Free Clinic has gone out, went three weeks to Ensign Road and two weeks to Deschutes. The first week is always an outreach effort, so they bring their nurses and they just familiarize the community with who they are and what they do. They provide wound care. And so those nurses have been kind of introducing them to who Olympia Free Clinic is and what they can, what their services are, and also that they will be providing vaccines. So this is also in conjunction with outreach workers. So outreach workers who are already familiar with that community are going out into the encampments to kind of be that friendly face that they're familiar with. They, they receive supplies, so they're getting outreach goods, but also a significant number of people receiving wound care. It's such a significant need. And then vaccines following. So this week, actually, they will be going to, the Olympia Free Clinic will be having an evening event. They'll be going to the Build a Bus Shower Power, so that West Side Shower, Mobile Shower Event will be having vaccines. I believe that's today. And then later on, the Emma Goldman Homeless Youth Project Outreach Group will also, there'll also be some vaccines going to that group. So really excited to be working with them. Our next, our next round of three weeks will be at the Wheeler-Nikerson Camp. So Olympia Free Clinic will be, will be planning that effort. Where, where that group is just on it with just getting flyers out and spreading the word and encouraging people to, to be vaccinated. It's, it's pretty cool. and encouraging people to, to be vaccinated. It's, it's a pretty cool effort.
For the most part, is that a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine or you have a?
Yeah, it's Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that's going out to that community, which of course makes it so much easier.
Right. Thank you.
All right, yeah. Olympia Free Clinic is, kudos to them for what they do.
I just want to be a nurse now.
Thank you, Keely.
Good day.
Next item is review of this afternoon's board agenda for May 25th, 2:00 PM. Meeting will be called to order. We will have Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Mejia. We will consider the agenda and board meeting minutes from May 18th. There will be a presentation from Public Works specifically about Reader Road Bridge at Beaver Creek project completion.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. You will hear from Public Works staff the successful completion of the Reader Road Bridge at Beaver Creek. And this is one of the projects included on the fish barrier removal program the board has funded over the last few years and proves to be successful every year. And this, this old bridge was, well, I'm not going to steal the thunder. Matt, you want to elaborate on that?
I'm not, I'm going to keep you guys in suspense, or Commissioners and County Manager keep you in suspense till this afternoon when I do the presentation. But I will be pinch hitting for Scotland Bloom this afternoon.
All right, sounds good.
All right, thanks, Matt. Any questions for Matt?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right, thank you. We'll look forward to that. And then we've got opportunity for the public to address the board, followed by County Manager's update. Anything to, we need to know, Romero, on those two?
No, no, sir.
Okay. That'll bring us to the consent agenda. There are five items. 3A is a treasurer item, authorizing the sale of tax titled property via private negotiation to OAR investments.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. You reviewed this item last, last week. And this is a request from the treasurer's office to engage in a private negotiation to surplus a property located in Ton of Buu Koda. This property is at 0.17 acres and is expected to sell for $1,863.50. That includes all the fees. I believe last week, also the next item was also review similar but different location. And Commissioner Edwards requested some time to have some questions. So I believe the board decided to bring those items for discussion today. If the board needs additional time and information, here we are. So let me introduce the next item as well, so you can have a global conversation. And the County Treasurer, Jeff Cadman, is here to answer additional question. The next item is item 3B is also a request from the treasurer's office to surplus a property by a private negotiation. This property is located in Yelm. And the size of this property is a .23 acres and is expected to sell by, for $1,763.50. A point to note on those two properties, those are encumbered by high flooding areas and both has perhaps deemed to be unbuildable based on the conditions that we currently have. So any questions for Jeff or myself or how you like to proceed on those two items, Commissioners?
I'll start with Commissioner Edwards since he had wanted the time to inspect the properties.
Okay, maybe I can report back to my seatmates what transpired on that. So I looked at those properties and looked at adjoining properties that, but up against them. And I, I don't recall right now, but I think there was like five potential properties that joined these. And I'll, I'll just refer to the two properties. I don't know which ones they are and which had which. But then we found addresses and phone numbers for those properties. And I thought, well, I'm going to check with the treasurer to make sure I'm not duplicating something that possibly he had already done and maybe he could just give me the information. So I explained that I was going to call these folks or stop in person if they had adjoining properties that they lived on. And at that point, Jeff said it was his, that no, they had not contacted these people individually, but that all the proper notice had been made to dispose of these proper, these properties in a legal fashion. But that he was worried that if we contacted the individual property owners that were adjacent to these properties, it might appear that we were trying to do something and maybe create favoritism, I guess. And, and I would appreciate it if Jeff jumped in, if that's not the right term that maybe we use, because I think the treasurer did everything that he felt he should do. My concern was that if these properties are temporarily disabled, say from building a house on, but they might be fine for the kids to play, play on in the summertime or something. I, I don't know. I wanted to get the best price for these properties that we could get for the taxpayers. And, and I did want to make sure that adjoining property owners were aware because there was no way to know if they've been made aware that the properties were for sale. So that brings me to another topic in which we talked about last week of always having legal counsel here so that we could ask legal counsel, would I be doing something illegal? Because oftentimes, if it's a, if it's an issue where it's appearance, that it looks like I'm doing something wrong, I believe I could sell that to anybody in the community that, no, I'm not doing anything wrong. I want to make sure that adjoining property owners know these properties are being disposed of and give them access to looking at it. So I'm wondering if we can ask counsel about that. And if counsel is not here or hasn't been briefed or been able to study the issue, possibly delay it again until counsel can let me know. Because I still think it would be proper on my part as a commissioner to see if I couldn't do the best for the citizens. And that's what I'm trying to do, but I don't want to get jammed up on doing something that could be illegal or, and if you talk about preferential treatment, I would do this on any property that I thought an adjoining property owner might not have been made aware. So I realize we can't mail something out to everybody and very few people look at these legal notices. So that's my dilemma. I want to do the best job for the public that I can, but I, I'm being cautious about it. So Jeff, if I've misstated anything, I'd sure like to have you jump in.
No, I think you pretty much covered it correctly. Thank you very much for your time this morning, Commissioners. You know, I try to avoid showing preferential treatment to any taxpayer. And we really want to be careful about that. We, especially when we get these unsolicited offers. We don't want to appear to be undermining what they're attempting to do. We don't want to appear to be showing preferential treatment to, you know, adjoining property owners. One thing, we don't want also to appear to be acting as a real estate broker, which that kind of gets into that quasi-territory. We need to remember, first of all, the county does not own these properties. We are holding these properties in trust for the tax districts. So for the county itself is going to get a very, very small portion of any sale price. And I definitely appreciate the idea of getting as much for these as we possibly can. But one thing that needs to be kept in mind with these tax titled properties, the reason they're tax titled is because the owner quit paying taxes on it. And when it went to auction, there were no bidders. So, or the bids were inadequate to cover what was needed to be got at auction. So it's not like these prop, most of these properties have any desirable amenities at all. So we need to limit also the cost to the taxpayers of trying to get rid of these properties as well.
Chair, could I follow up on that, please?
Sure.
The benefit that I see the county getting, if they were to sell that property, I'll just say for $10,000 versus $1,000, is the assessed evaluation that those two properties now, if they were enjoying together and maybe one owner that's adjacent to would buy it, the tax benefit to the citizens, because we all pay property taxes, would then be increased. And from now on and forever, they would be paying that little more taxes that would help us in the long run. And I'm always trying to look out for the general fund. So I just think that there's merit to contacting them. And if people thought I was being preferential, I think I could justify what I would be intending to do. And as long as I was doing nothing that was illegal, I would probably go ahead and contact those people to make sure they had an opportunity to buy an adjoining property at, at whatever price. If they just didn't know about it, I just, I think it's a fairness issue to the adjoining property owners because most people just do not ever see those legal notices and follow what goes on. So that's why I'd like to have legal counsel advise me. If there's something that actually says, no, you can't do this because of X, well, then I'm going to let it go. But if they say, well, no, there's nothing that says you can't do it. It's just, it might look improper. I want to do the best I can for the citizens of this county at whichever status they're at. So that's why I'm asking for the delay. Thank you.
Okay, sounds like Commissioner Edwards is requesting additional time so that we can discuss with legal counsel the propriety of his proposed action. Commissioner Mejia's hand is up, and then the County Manager. Go ahead, Commissioner Mejia.
I have a question, just in, in the process of things. I mean, wouldn't the property owners that are adjacent to it have a chance to, or they would have had a chance to come at the auction and purchase these properties? If they so wished at that time?
Yeah, they would. They had every opportunity to come to the auction and put in bids on this property. That's, so one thing, tax title is, is this weird thing. And, and, you know, like I said, we've got to keep in mind, we don't own this property. And, and, but we're holding it in trust. We've got certain liabilities that we've absorbed by holding it in trust, even though we don't own it. For instance, three or four months ago, we had to take down a tree on one of the tax titled properties that was a danger tree. That was at cost to the general fund. Whereas if that property had been sold to a member of the public, then it wouldn't have been on us or on, on the taxpayers of the county. And, and I do want to assure Commissioner Edwards that we do our best to get the most money we can for these properties. And, and the fact that these have been deemed unbuildable because of their positioning with reflect to flood zones, it's, it's going to be hard to get a lot more than what we're asking.
Okay, County Manager?
Just to provide a perspective in terms of the property taxes that we'll generate into the general fund. And one property is assessed at $16,300, that's the one in Buu Koda. And after all the levies are taken out, the approximate taxes to the general fund, it will be $17.02 a year. On the, on the property located in Yelm, the assessed value is $14,200. After we take all the levies imposed on that area, the, the increase to the general fund will be $17.35 a year. So at this point, I think a request from Commissioner Edwards is to delay those items. I would like to hear the board weigh in on that. If the board decides to delay those items, it will be for another two weeks since we don't have a meeting next Tuesday. And then I will ask Commissioner Edwards to outline what a specific legal question he would like to ask. I think I have an idea, but I will make sure that I will verbalize it just to make sure that I capture his perspective. So two steps on this, whether the board likes to delay those items for another two weeks. And then if that is the case, then I will ask Commissioner Edwards to, or verbalize the, the legal question that he poses.
I'm not aware of any time issue that would make me not want to give Commissioner Edwards a chance to have his legal questions answered. So in the absence of hearing a time issue, I'm, I'm fine with Commissioner Edwards' proposal. Commissioner Mejia?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards, two weeks good enough then, and then you can articulate your?
Sure, I would like to comment, though, on the County Manager's statement.
Go for it.
The unbuildable term, I'm just gonna, I'm going to challenge that. There was a property owner out in my area that was told by the county they had an unbuildable lot because of all the things that were listed here this morning by different individuals that it may or may not be buildable. As soon as they sold that lot at a much reduced price, somebody was able to get a permit after that person had not been able to get a permit for over 10 years. So somebody else came in here to the county and they got a permit to do exactly what that person had intended on doing. And so now there's a home sitting there and the lot went up in price by about $80,000. So the, the term unbuildable doesn't make sense to me because apparently there are situations that develop and nothing on that lot I'm referring to out by Yelm changed. It was just somebody knew somebody and was able to get a permit. So I'll, I'll just let that go with that. The evaluation increase in the lot does not take into consideration if the adjoining lot owner actually buys it, pays more money for it because they were notified and recognize it's an asset. It then increases the forever taxes that that lot owner, when they combine those, pays to move forward. Or maybe that lot owner knows somebody that they can get a permit, even though it said that you can't get a permit. So I don't know if you want to call it corruption or mistakes, but things happen. And that's why I'm concerned. So I would like to have the delay. And to the County Manager's question about lay out my question to legal, I think I've made it perfectly clear in the minutes of this meeting to the attorney that could advise me back. I don't think I need to lay out a particular question.
No, let me verbalize what I understood, if I may, Commissioner. Will that work? Is that okay, or?
Yes, sir. I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, go ahead. You're asking me, but you're asking?
No, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Edwards. I mean, that's his question. I just want to make sure that I capture his, the intent of his questions because there was a lot of comments made on, related to that question. So what, what I understand is you would like to hear legal opinion, whether you can reach out to the adjacent property owners to make him, one, making them aware of, of this property is for surplus? And secondly, whether you can negotiate a price?
No, I'm not interested in a price.
Okay, so just the contact?
I just want to let the adjoining property owner know that something is about to happen because during the auction process, they probably weren't notified of that either. Because during the auction process, they probably weren't notified of that either. Be, and I shouldn't say weren't notified. We make legal notification on all of these properties, and I don't want anybody to think we don't. I just want to make sure that they do get notified. Uh, I actually did this on one of the pending sales one time before because I did not know I was doing something. So I don't want to let the cat out of the bag on, uh, maybe I did something illegal. But I think this is a darn good example of why every meeting we should have legal counsel here. So I'll just let it go at that. Thank you to my seatmates for extending this time so we can take a look at it.
Yeah, it's too bad because legal counsel was here at nine o'clock and had to leave. Yeah, so, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, so I just, I do want to assure you, procedures that we're using to market these properties are intended to get the best price we can with the information we have available. At the same time, making sure that the uh, the marketing or the selling of these properties is cost effective. The amount of taxes that are coming in for these two properties amounts to about an hour of time for the person who is responsible for dealing with these properties. So, um, and, and it's not just an hour of time, you know, that, that's an hour for total, for putting all of this together. And I also want to say that if a property sells for like the $1,600, if the buyer is able to perfect the property to a point where it can be built on, and the assessed value goes up we, um, in proportion to that, that that is going to increase the amount of money that comes in annually to the general fund, which is a good thing.
Thank you, Jeff. And I would like to commend you and your staff for doing the excellent job that you've been doing in attempting to get these things uh that are questionable done and off, you know, back on the tax rolls and such. So thank you very much. I'd just ask one other thing. Is there any possibility on these properties that we could actually post them? And then maybe there wouldn't be an issue because anybody in the neighborhood would actually know. Is, is that within the law? And then we'd cover everything. I just wonder, just bringing that up.
I, I think that's a good question for you to ask when you meet with legal counsel. Uh, because like I said, we don't, I don't have a real estate broker's license, and neither does the revenue officer that handles these. And I know that the laws governing how real estate brokers and agents behave are very, very strict in Washington State. And I really, really wouldn't want to get us in Dutch with that group.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I want to get everything right as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, more to come on those two. Uh, so they'll be off of the consent agenda for this afternoon, correct?
Yes, sir. You will see that on the June 8th.
All right, so then 3C, which will probably become 3A this afternoon, uh, presumably, would be human resources, uh, resolution, civil service, resolution for bureau staff assistant and sheriff's office systems administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. This is a request from the clerk's office for you to consider reclassifying an existing position from a business application technician to, to a business application analyst.
Hold on, Ramiro, you skipped 3C.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm, I'm the 3C, the clerk's office?
Nope.
Human resources.
Human resources, civil service.
Okay, I guess ours are in different order, maybe. I don't, I don't know.
We're looking at different agendas?
I guess so.
I have, I guess I have the same one as Commissioner, and sir. I see the human resources, um, the resolution for bureau staff assistant and sheriff's office system administrator.
Okay, I have that agenda as well, Ramiro, but I thought that was superseded by the, a newer one. Maybe I got the two reversed.
Yes, can, can we distribute a new agenda?
I, I have it. I just, I had two this morning.
Oh, sorry, is, is the, the, the agenda that includes the clerk's office as a 3C?
That's what I've got.
Okay, then I'll switch to that one.
But it sounds like Commissioner Mejia has something.
Do you have that agenda?
One from over there.
My apologies.
Okay, then 3C on this agenda is clerk, reclassifying position.
Yes.
I, I have no questions on that, sir. I, I do think this is a good example of how complicated these Zoom meetings are.
I have no questions in regards to.
What about 3D? We looked at the clerk last week. So 3D is commissioner's office establishing position in the Thurston County Actwell Plate Plan.
Yeah, last week I mentioned this to you, give you a heads up that I will be bringing this item for your consideration today. And this particular item is for you to consider establishing a temporary position, senior program manager. And that will be, have an end date of December 31st, 2022. This is related to the resolution number 1599, 15995. The board passed declaring racism a crisis in Thurston County and asked the county manager to create a racial equity plan that is due uh, in June of 2021. This particular request is, is for you to authorize this position to help in delivering, I believe, the, the, what has been stated in the, in, in, in the resolution 15995. Just have to be honest with you, I just don't have the time to do justice to deliver the, the intent of this resolution. And in fact, if the board approves this, I will ask for you to delay the requirement that I need to come up with the, uh, the plan by the end of June. Because I just, I, I'm, I'm working, but it's, I'm not doing justice to the whole thing. And, and this is an attempt to uh, 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 have additional help for this person to concentrate on the key elements of, of this particular resolution. Uh, this position will have a salary range from $6,632 to $8,843, and that will have to, that will have to come up with from the general fund on the commissioner's office. We have enough uh, salary savings on the, on the commissioner's office this year, and we're not asking for additional budget allocation as a result of this proposal.
Commissioner Mejia, questions?
Will this position only cover that resolution? Is it just for that resolution?
Is, is going to be.
Get it rolling?
Yes, it's going to be focused on, on implementing the key elements of that resolution, which includes the racial equity action plan, the implementation of it, as well as the training that you have in there, and as well as the formation of the racial equity committee, um, uh, which I have a draft resolution, but it's just the, the the actual implementation, some of the elements.
Okay.
Commissioner Edwards?
I have no questions, sir.
Uh, me neither. I guess I, to comment, I just had run this by the director of public health, who also strongly supported this uh, this position as being needed to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish in the resolution. So looks like we're good there. Let's go to 3E. Civil, uh, human resources, civil service, resolution for bureau staff assistant and sheriff's office systems administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, as you reviewed this item last week. And for your consideration is, uh, is to revise positions uh, the bureau, uh, staff assistant and the sheriff's office system administrator job classifications. The job classifications within the sheriff's office are coordinated with the civil services committee, I believe. And, and at this point, they have gone through the process and they provide a recommendation for you to approve the revised classifications. And again, it's one for the bureau staff assistant, and the other one is for the sheriff's office, uh, systems administrator. Those revisions on the, on the job classifications do not change the current salary. This is just changing the, the job specifications to better align with the current activities those individuals holding those positions in the sheriff's office are currently doing.
Commissioner Mejia?
No questions.
Commissioner Edwards?
No, sir.
Nope, I'm good. Let's go to what's now 3F, probably be 3D this afternoon, which is the vouchers. Any questions from the board on the auditor's voucher list?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Item four is human resources, request for proposal for classification compensation recruitment studies.
You're, thank you, Commissioner, as you reviewed this item as well last week. And for your considerations to issue a request for proposals to secure the services of our consultant, they can help us in implementing the revisions of the classifications, compensations, and recruitment practices study here in, in, in the county. This has been a high priority from, uh, I believe from the board of county commissions and the county as a whole. There is a need, uh, that, that we need to bring all those old positions to occur in the status and, and to go through the revisions of their classification and compensation. You know, I just want to make sure that if the board approves this, you know, we'll come back with, obviously with the contract as, with a successful bidder. But also for the view in public and perhaps employees. Uh, going through this process is, is just aligning to the current activities the employees do on those classifications. That may not necessarily result in increase in salaries. So it seems to me always, this seems to be that perception that just because we revised the, the job classification, similar to the previous items that you just, and the consent agenda of the positions in the, in the sheriff's office, it's just revising the classifications to better align uh, with the current activities is one thing. And along the way, if the compensation needs to be adjusted, also needs to be part of that. It can go either way uh, on, on, on that end. But really having a consultant looking holistically, uh, all the positions that we have, bring it up to what I call current standards. Uh, and that is the intent of this particular um uh, request for proposals. I mentioned to you last week that perhaps this will take several years for the full implementation. Uh, because it's one thing, it's getting to the point of revising the classifications, going through the compensation study. And then the implementation aspect, they may require some budget decisions by the board. It will take some time to do so as well. Um, now the Maria is here, if you have any questions. Uh, HR director. You also received a, an email uh, this morning, and I will, I probably, Maria addressed that email from Sean Chatterton. He's the president of the Thurston County Sheriff's Association. And he requested the sheriff's office, uh, positions should be included as part of their request for job classification. Uh, that seems to be a little bit, you know, uh, uh, different request since all the positions uh, within the sheriff's office are overseen, updated, and revised by the civil service commission. So, um, Maria, you want to elaborate on that response?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Maria Ponte, human resources director. Good morning, everyone. Um, the request by Mr. Chatterton is to include the deputies, corrections deputies, and captains in this review. However, um, the reason they are not included is because part of their collective bargaining agreement includes a market study. Um, and so theirs are done periodically. And the standard for how they're paid is established by the laws and rules for interest arbitration. So there is a difference there. And with respect to the non-commission staff, we already have an MOU in place that resulted from their negotiations where we are actively updating those class specs, and that includes a market study. Um, so for instance, today you'll see that bureau assistant, that's gone through that process. So in essence, we are already actively uh, doing their compensation, uh, classification and compensation study. So what could happen in the future is part of the RFP is to reevaluate who our market comparators are, so the other jurisdictions. And if those change significantly, uh, we can always, and I believe we've committed to go back to the administrative association and reevaluate compensation if need be. So our intent is to keep them in alignment. So any questions on that?
Commissioner Mejia?
No, sir.
Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, yes, I do. I don't know if this is a question to Maria or not, or just a statement of overall policy. I think it's important that we do this. And, and I don't know where the sheriff's union folks would fit into this. It sounds like you've got that covered, uh, and maybe they're not aware of it. I don't know. Uh, but I do think it is of great importance. I've talked with the other elected officials around the county. And retention and recruitment are two very big issues that have to do with, uh, really the ability to provide good service to the public and to keep the cost down. Because if you think about how long it takes to train a new employee, uh, and, and we don't have the ability to encourage folks to come here. So it's always better if we can retain those good employees that we would like to retrain or retain. So that's why I'm very much in favor of doing this because I think it, it gives us the ability to provide the best service. And in the long run, if we don't pay or have adequate compensation, we do have too much turnover, and I think that is very costly uh, to the taxpayers in the end, whether through service or just additional expense. So that's my concern on that and why I favor doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I agree.
Okay, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Edwards 100% on that. So I'm excited to see this. The, how long has it been, Maria, since this type of a study's been done for some of the groups in the county?
So I would say that generally, um, it's been probably 15 to 20 years before, um, since we've done a comprehensive similar to this. We've done things ad hoc, so, um, as a position becomes vacant, we attempt to update those classifications. We have created new classifications. But this is sorely needed. Um, there's a lot of questions and concerns around classification and compensation. And I think bringing in an objective third party to conduct that study will be very helpful for everyone involved.
Will this, will this process, because you know, obviously there's a lot of groups with, you know, ins and outs to their, to their, you know, situation. And will this process roll out in a way that some groups can be done and maybe implemented before others? Not that I'm trying to put groups ahead of others, but I think, I, in terms of me hearing, there are certain groups that come up over and over again that I, I'm pretty certain are like pretty far out of whack. And I'm wondering if we can, you know, rather than having it take five years to get to everybody, can we sort of hit the, you know, can, can this roll out in a, in a way that, you know, some groups can be addressed sooner, the ones that are in need of that, more glaring?
Yeah, so I think the goal is to get at least all of the classifications updated, updated with a compensation study, then based on the consultant's recommendations. If we're lagging in positions, we can certainly prioritize those. So for instance, if a position is lagging by 20%, we certainly want to take some kind of action to fund that. Ultimately, that is at the, the board discretion. But where a position is minimally lagging, then there's no reason why that one couldn't be prioritized at a later date. And so that will be part of the recommendations that the RFP is seeking as a presentation to the stakeholders, including the board, on recommendations and helping us prioritize those items.
Chair, Chair, can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Recently, we made a decision to help the coroner out on a situation in which he needs to have some kind of a job description uh, put together. I, I can't tell you the name of the position, but he had a, a person that, because of the COVID, could not participate anymore. And it sounded very much like if he could fill that position, it was going to save us money and actually cut down on expenses because other counties would then start utilizing that person and our facility. So I would use that, I guess, as. So I would use that, I guess, as an example of how we might prioritize and get something done a little quicker and maybe not even wait for this RFP. I'm hoping that's being worked on now. So I don't know where we're at on it, but I just thought it'd be worth bringing that up that it might be a good example of what we were talking about here this morning. So thank you.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So Coroner Warnock had made a request for, I think he called it a morgue slash autopsy technician. He made that request through the amendment process. But instead, for part of the policy level request, I have staff that are on point to assist him with creating that job specification and establish the compensation. And then that will come before the board prior to this RFP because it's a brand-new position.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Maria. Looks like we're good to go for this item this afternoon.
All right, I'll see you this afternoon.
All right. Item five is Public Health and Social Services, Department of Ecology Solid, sorry, Local Solid Waste Financial Assistance Amendment Number One.
Yeah, Commissioners, you reviewed this item last week. And you heard from the staff, it became an opportunity from the Department of Ecology to receive additional funding to our current contract that we have with, again, with the Department of Ecology at the state. And this is to provide permitting inspection and solid waste enforcement activities. And the amendment for you is to add $17,754.67 for a total cost of $187,994. And this is an opportunity came to receive additional funding so we can increase the services. And if you have any questions, I believe Art Starr is here to elaborate on that.
Any questions from the board?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, I'm good. Let's go to five B.
Five B, this is a new item, but it is the same similar situation. We also became aware that the Department of Ecology has an additional $22,022 on our existing contract that we provide technical assistance and education outreach for small businesses to prevent pollution of waters of the state as part of the local source control partnership. Environmental Health staff will conduct source control site visits and pollution prevention activities to small businesses that generate hazardous waste and have the potential to pollute its own water. And again, this is the same approach. It's an additional amendment to the existing contract to add $22,022 for a total cost of a cost of $196,507. And Art is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
This is all good, right, Art?
This is all good, I think. So Patrick from our Solid and Hazardous Waste Programs worked with Department of Ecology to secure this additional funding. And it is, those are really good programs, both of them. But this last one, again, as Romero indicated, it allows us to work with businesses on a more cooperative level to identify best practices and help them implement measures to reduce pollution. And so it's been very effective.
Questions from the board?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
No, sir.
Looks like we're good to go on five B.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll see you this afternoon.
Yep, sounds good. Item six is Public Works. Interlocal Agreement with City of Olympia for 2021 Solid Waste Management Plan and Hazardous Waste Plan Updates.
Yeah, I think it-
New item, right?
No, you reviewed this item last week, Commissioner.
You did, okay.
And this is related to an interlocal agreement with the City of Olympia related to the Solid Waste Management Plan. And also related to the flow control, the City of Olympia is trying to align and all the efforts that we have here relate to the overall solid waste management. Not just the solid waste management plan, but also the solid waste contracts. The briefing is coming up to you in the next couple of weeks, an executive session related to that. So this is, this is an important document for you to consider. The City of Olympia is a key player on the solid waste management. And again, this ILA is more of an alignment to the solid waste management plan and also related to the flow control. They are in alignment with the resolution the board passed, I believe, last year. Karen Wees can elaborate or answer any additional questions you may have.
Questions for Karen? Commissioner Mihian?
No, sir.
Commissioner Edwards?
No, sir.
No? I do not either. Thank you, Karen. Let's move to item seven. Under County Manager, Letter of Intent for Atrium 3000 Pacific Avenue.
Yeah, Commissioner, you have discussed this for the last two, three weeks. And this is related to a letter of intent with the owner of the atrium, the 3000 Pacific Avenue, related to a proposed, you know, plan. They will move some offices and departments to this building. And as a result, it will create additional space here at the courthouse campus. And also, there will be some moves within the campus to, with the objective is to generate additional space that I believe all the offices and departments need. You discussed this item last week. Commissioner Minister requested to delay this item for another week. So here we are. Now, in the last week, additional elements has transpired. And some of the requirements that I have seen related to this particular move has raised concerns to me that perhaps we will not be able to deliver this project within the allotted budget. And this is just really the concern that I have at this point based on what I have seen materialize in the last week. So I reached out to the owner of the atrium. And I expressed my concern at this point. And my recommendation at this point for the board was going to be to move away from this plan because we don't have the, perhaps, the means and methods. And I asked him if how critical for him will be to have this letter of intent signed before he can give us a more concrete estimate of how much it will cost the tenant improvements before the board can make an informed decision. So my request has shifted to, for you to consider delaying this item for another three weeks. And at that point, I will bring with very tangible dollars and cents to the board. And at that point, I will ask in your decision whether the, my concern of whether we can afford this or not is on point. Or perhaps there is a way for you to consider financially whether this is a feasible or viable option for the county. So that's where I am. So in just, I request the board to delay this item for another three weeks.
Commissioner Mihian?
I'm okay with delaying for three weeks.
Commissioner Edwards?
I also am okay with it and prefer it, to be honest with you. But I would like to know if we're going to have some ongoing discussion at some point, whether it's our commissioners' check-in or something, so we can spend a little bit of time on why this or why that as we move forward or don't. So I'm just asking for the board to have more time allotted to this to keep us kind of in the loop. I know I heard from quite a few elected officials that felt they were left out of the loop. And so I want to spend more time talking about it together where those folks may be able to at least listen to our discussions.
That sounds like a request for the county manager. Trying to find a good time where a board discussion could take place. It's not a problem for me. I support the county manager's proposal. I was, I had independently decided that I would not be prepared to sign a letter of intent today. Basically because, and this relates to why I asked for the additional week last week. You know, the financial plan that has been presented to us is, was assumed a very streamlined set of tenant improvements at the atrium. And as I went through, worked through the specifics with different offices and departments that'll be moving, it started to look to me, and I think same to the county manager, as if the needs of the groups might not fit within the available resources. So although I'm certain that this move will really benefit county government in a substantial way, I have to, I have to be confident that the, that the financial requirements will fit within our available resources. And sitting here right now, I'm not certain of that. So I'm really, I'm really heartened to hear that the property owner will work with us to try to harden those numbers so that we can make a good decision based on good information. Because we just don't have quite enough information to make sure that we're on a financially sound basis right now. So that's where I'm at. So hopefully, we'll have a more, a more firm basis to make that decision in three weeks. And if the board can have additional discussions between then, that's fine with me. So this will be removed from the agenda for today, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there will be no seven A. Commissioner Edwards, do you have something?
Maybe this would be for Robin. Possibly last week, I might have asked if we did this move and did the adjustments that were going to be required, would we still have the $50 million that we've been talking about that we might have available to us for some fix around the courthouse? My follow-up question to that is, what, what was going to pay that bond off? What, and you said, yes, that we did have the ability to do $50 million. What is the payment fund that we would be paying that off with? Is that, is that like the REIT tax, sales tax? What, what, what all? Or does it entail a complete grouping of all of our revenue? I'm just curious.
No, the, the bond would be paid with REIT one.
Okay. And, and we have, we're anticipating adequate funding as we even move forward at some point in dealing with the courthouse situation. Is that right?
Yes, as long as we stay within our parameters.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to seven B. Set a public hearing for Amendment One of the 2021 Budget.
Yeah, Commissioners, for your consideration is to consider setting a public hearing for Tuesday, June 22, 2021, at three in the afternoon. Also in the afternoon, in Building One here in this room, for you to receive public testimony related to the Budget Amendment Number One for the 2021 operating capital budgets. And this is pretty much following the preliminary decisions that you made during the Budget Amendment and just allows the public to provide their perspective. There is not a requirement for you to hold a public hearing for budget amendments. We are required to make those available to the public. However, this public hearing is in tandem with the amendments to the Capital Facilities Plan. You are required to hold a public hearing. So a request for to hold a public hearing on the amendments of the Capital Facilities Plan will be coming to your attention in the next couple of weeks after the Planning Commission has held their public hearing and provided recommendations to the board. That's all consolidated on, on the, I believe, on this item. And Robin is more than happy to answer any questions.
Robin, anything to add to that?
Only if you have questions.
Commissioner Mihian?
No questions.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, sir. This public hearing that we were talking about setting, would, is it kind of part and parcel with the atrium thing? Was that part of that amendment to the capital plan or something?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's two, it's two different items. And this is certainly the public hearing for you to receive public testimony only Amendment Number One of the 2021 Budget. We'll bring another item for your consideration that you also most likely set the public hearing for the same time and date, not the same time. To, for you to consider amendment of the Capital Facilities Plan that includes the 3,000 building, Pacific building. So two elements related, but working on parallel on, for you to consider a single decision point.
I guess my follow-up to that would be, shouldn't we know prior to setting a public hearing what we're going to be setting it about? And for an example, if we choose not to do something, would that make sense to include that in the public hearing? I guess, I'm a little confused on the whole thing about the timing involved around this. So that's where I'm at.
So the, the Budget Amendment includes many, many things other than the funding for the atrium. And we have already delayed this item. And I encourage you to go forward. We can always put a proviso that if we don't move forward with the rental of the atrium, that that money not be spent. It's just authority to spend. But, but there are so many other things included in this amendment that I encourage you to move forward on this timeline.
Okay, and then part of that is going to be, what would be included would be the cost of the atrium issue if we did it. So you're saying we can take that out or add it through an amendment or something? Is that what I'm hearing?
Certainly take it out. Or, you know, by the time you take action on the budget on June 29, we should have better numbers. And you should have a sense of whether or not you want to go forward. You could take that funding out at that time. Or you could leave it in on a proviso that it could not be spent in any other way. So that if we do not go forward, it would simply revert. But there are just so many other items. There's your, all of the COVID response money is in this amendment. Not only the recovery fund, but also all of the money coming in to support public health. There's funding for the Blake decision in this amendment. There are just so many other things that we need to have available for our offices and departments.
When, when we have a public hearing like that and we're going to include something that has not yet been, I don't know, authorized, is that, is that legal and where I'm kind of going with that? Okay, we're, we're still talking about what we may or may not do. The Planning Commission is still scheduled, I guess, to make some changes. And they haven't made those changes yet. Are we still all okay? I mean, are there requirements that we have this noticed out there well ahead of time? What happens then if we change our mind somewhere along the line? Is that all okay? Because I don't know the rules. I think that's kind of another reason I'd like to have legal always here. But are we okay to make those changes as we move along?
Yes, yes, you are absolutely okay to make all those changes as we go. And I would also say that it is a common practice, if, if not normal, to include things in the budget that we are planning. They're in the planning stages. They're not final yet, certainly not under contract yet because you cannot obligate funds until they are appropriated. So it is, it's what one does in a budget is allow for things that you're planning to do. And if the plans don't come to fruition, then the money simply remains in the fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My question is, do we have, have we done? I can't recall. Have we done public hearings on budget amendments in the past?
We did them for some time, and then we stopped. We, we give notice. We stopped holding public hearings on the budget amendments in an attempt to streamline and speed up the process. Because while the law requires notice, it does not require public hearings. But because this particular budget amendment is substantial- is substantial, to say the least, it adds 34.5 million to expenditure authority in the general fund and 94 million to expenditure authority in other funds. And we're amending the Capital Facilities Plan. We thought it would be a good idea to take public comment on this particular amendment.
Okay, that answers my question. Everybody good on this?
Chair? I don't know. I didn't notice if Commissioner Mahia had her hand up. No, okay. Can we amend this announcement as we go along? I mean, is is that or amend the topics of discussion on a public hearing notice? I'm just wondering the legality of that.
That would be an excellent question for your attorney. I don't know that you can amend what you discuss at the hearing. This particular amendment or this particular public hearing is set specifically for the budget amendment. So any discussion related to the budget amendment would be legal. And then we will also set the hearing again on the same date for the Capital Facility Plan after the Planning Commission holds their public hearing on on the CFP.
How many days' notice do we have to give when we're setting a public hearing?
On the budget amendment, we are required to give notice once a week for the two weeks prior to the the date that the board plans to take action. So that notice will go out no later than Monday. And then we'll publish it two weeks in a row, and then you'll hold the hearing. For your other hearings, there are different requirements. It's my understanding that state law is 10, 10 days. And I would turn to Romero for that.
Yeah, thank you. And that is correct. We have a county code. Any public hearing, you allow 20 days. And also, state law requires a minimum of 10 days. And in the past, the board members, depending on the urgency of the matter, has waived the 20 days code requirements and going with state law. Considering that perhaps the Planning Commission is is in upcoming, I mean, is going to hear the amendments to the Capital Facilities Plan. When you see the the request for you to set the public hearing on the Capital Facilities Plan, most likely, it will include for you to waive the 20 day comment period and for you to consider going with just 10 days allowed by state law.
But if we don't kind of take action on this today, we're kind of out of luck on being able to get it done by June 22, it sounds like. Is that right?
Yes, so you will hold the public hearing on June 22. Today's the last possible day to set the public hearing for that date. And then we'll ask you to take action on the budget and the CFP on June 29.
But there's a lot of other things in here that we need to address, I'm hearing.
Yes, so many things.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I so I guess I'm, I'd like to hear from our financial person, which I've just heard from, that this looks like we need to do it. I mean, is this, you guys are in agreement that we're kind of stuck right now? We need to move forward and do this to do everything legal that we need to do? Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, I've got a lot of questions. You know, well, it'd be nice to know this or that. But if we're in a pinch, I just want to make sure we always do everything right. That's all. So so we should move forward with the public hearing on this amendment? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is my recommendation, sir.
And the county manager as well.
Yeah, and and this is really is the the next step on the, I believe, two to three week conversation that all of you had related to the budget amendment number one and the many different items that you discussed, I believe, in great detail. And you made some preliminary decisions. And as you may recall, I have recorded the votes on individual items that you that you exercised. So this is really is the is the result of these preliminary decisions. Setting the public hearing in the public will give you the give the opportunity to provide testimony on those preliminary decisions before you make a final determination on the budget amendment number one. And as Robin has stated, after the public testimony is received on the 22, the board really has the latitude to adjust whatever decisions you want to make before the 29th of June.
Okay, okay, I'm good, sir.
Okay, then we'll go to Item 7C, which is reporting on board work sessions, committee meetings, community events, county manager review of combined schedule. We'll adjourn, but we'll have a public hearing at 3 o'clock or soon thereafter, as may be heard, based on how long the 2:00 PM meeting takes. It's a community planning and economic development matter related to renewal of interim emergency housing ordinance.
Yes, Commissioners, this is for you to take public testimony related to extending ordinance 15948, which is the interim regulations related for housing and homeless encampments in the unincorporated areas of the county. The current interim resolution ends on June 9, 2021. And if the board decides to approves on this extended resolution, will take us to December 9, 2021. For your consideration this afternoon is is two actions. One is for you to close the public hearing. And depending on the public testimony, for your consideration will be for you to approve extended the existing ordinance. Leah Davis is here. If you have any additional questions leading to the public hearing this afternoon.
Any questions from the board?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Nope, me neither. All right. Well, that'll get us through this afternoon. Item four is a review of next week's draft agenda, but that meeting has been canceled based on following a holiday is kind of our standard practice. So there will be no, we will have an agenda setting in the morning to review the proposed agenda for June 8.
That is correct. And and the agenda setting will be a little bit smaller. I was hoping to bring some a couple of executive sessions on next Tuesday, since Commissioner Mahia is not going to be able to attend. She's having a well deserved break next week. So I will bring those executive sessions in the following week on the June 8 meeting.
Okay, it's 10:37. We'll take a break before we move into Item Five, which is appropriations and awards. We will reconvene at, let's just say, 10:50. 13 minutes.
Good morning, reconvening after the recess for the Board of County Commissioners agenda-setting work sessions, ten fifty-two AM. We pick up with item five on this morning's agenda, it's Proclamations and Awards. Turn it to the Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis.
Good morning, the proclamation included in your packet is for LGBTQ plus month, which will be on for June eighth, as the meeting next week is canceled.
Okay, and that's all we've got until July?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, any questions from the Board?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right, let's go to item six, Advisory Boards and Commissions.
Yes, all applications today are for the Agriculture Advisory Committee. I'll start with the committee vacancies. So you should have the roster now as well. There is one reappointment for consideration. Seat eight, as a non-farmer, for Juanita Gigi McClure. Seat seven, a farmer position is vacant, and seat eleven, a non-farmer position is vacant. So, one reappointment, one farmer, and one non-farmer. We've received the following applications: from Gigi McClure for reappointment, from Jessica Honaker as a non-farmer, from Mercy Kiriyuku McGee as a farmer, and from Glenn Shornow as a farmer. So, the member up for reappointment reapplied, one for the vacant non-farmer position, and two for the vacant farmer position. And you will notice one applicant withdrew late last week, so that is noted on the cover page. And regarding the reappointment, each member excluding the Chair who sent the email request, the member up for reappointment, and one committee member whose response was not included, voted for Ms. McClure's reappointment. So, now, if I may, it is my recommendation that the Board includes the reappointment of Ms. McClure and the appointment of Jessica Honaker as a non-farmer on today's agenda, provided there are no concerns with either's application. This essentially leaves the applicants Mercy and Glenn for the farmer position. We did not receive a recommendation from the committee as requested, and I do know they have a special meeting scheduled for this Thursday, May twenty-seventh, for the purpose of interviewing the applicants, though they attended their meeting on Thursday, May twentieth. So if you're comfortable with the committee moving forward with their special meeting this Thursday, they could potentially speak with just these two applicants for the farmer position and provide their recommendation to me by end of day Friday, May twenty-seventh, to be included for agenda setting Tuesday, June first, or, I'm sorry, June eighth, if Commissioner Meehan is out. So it is moving, oh, go ahead. If moving forward with the reappointment and non-farmer appointment today and receiving committee recommendation on the farmer position addresses concerns, we can move forward with that, or are there any questions?
I, I do have a question. Why is there a special meeting being set for this and not discussed at their regular meeting time?
It is my understanding the applicants were present at their regularly-scheduled meeting last Thursday, May twentieth. And they introduced themselves and spoke a couple of minutes with the committee, and the committee voted to still move forward with a scheduled special meeting to, to have time to gather their thoughts and questions for the applicants.
So, I have a couple of comments and questions. Are we ready, Chair?
Absolutely, go for it.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement that it's nice to receive recommendations from the different advisory boards, and any input they have on, you know, it's always helpful when making decisions. My questions are, is, you know, how much do we expect every commission to vet every candidate that applies for these voluntary positions? And is the information and the application enough to make a recommendation? I'm, just, you know, and concerned about adding on a special meeting. I, I went to the last advisory meeting. And so, I mean, those are just questions out there for the rest of, for the Board, I guess, because I, it's something I would like, some clarification on, on what are the expectations from us to these advisory committees when it comes to vetting these, these candidates? I mean, I appreciate the, the input, but I'm just trying to see where a special meeting to interview candidate comes in play.
Well, I've never, go ahead, Ken, any.
I, I did get some information related to the scheduled special meeting to conduct formal interviews. At least from my history, it's a little bit of unusual to have that formal setting to interview volunteers. They have put an application for consideration by appointment by the Board of County Commissioners. So, that seems to be a little bit of unusual for me to go through the formal process. And at least from the, the level that I see, it creates a little bit of discouraging. Some of the applicants, they will be exposed to the series of questions in a formal setting where there is an application that you will review and before you're considering appointments. So, and, and this is just my reaction to what I've, I, I've heard related to the special meeting. The, the Board, the Advisory, Agriculture Advisory Committee has set up, and they're planning to conduct formal interviews to the applicants.
I, I, I mean, I've never heard of such a thing, and we've had multiple appointments to the Agriculture Advisory Committee in the, in the two and a half years that I've been here, and that's never been done before. So I have to wonder why the committee feels that's necessary in this case. And in fact, the applicants, as requested, were present and not questioned or spoken to, is my understanding. So, I have the same concern the county manager expressed. I don't want to deter people from volunteering on this committee. I don't want people to feel like they're being treated in a particular way for any particular reason that's not consistent and appropriate from appointment to appointment. This has certainly never happened. And I'm really nervous when it's happening, I'm really nervous when it's happening in a situation where the applicant was there and present, and then we immediately get a new applicant promulgated by the same people who at the meeting didn't want to proceed with talking to the original applicants and sort of campaigning for them. And, you know, the Agricultural Advisory Committee has not been functioning smoothly for a while. I suggested that we try a change of leadership. The Board did not take me up on my suggestion, and we reappointed the Chair. So at this point, all I can see that we can do is add some new faces to this, to this committee. I support Amy's recommendation to reappoint Ms. McClure and Ms. Honaker because they're, they're basically unopposed. They have, they're two applicants for two non-farmer positions. I support Ms. McGee for the farmer position because I think we need new faces and new energy in the Agriculture Advisory Committee. I'm very concerned about, I, I've personally listened to some of the meetings. I've had my assistant listen to all the pieces that I wasn't able to personally listen to. So between the two of us, we've heard everything, and it's not going smoothly. And I'm very concerned about this new wrinkle in just a routine appointment for vacant positions. And it, it just goes right back to my concern about why I didn't appoint, you know, support the last reappointment, going back to things that happened to the Conservation District back, you know, going back in time. So, very concerned about this. I'd like to get this committee straightened out before more, you know, a more serious action would need to be taken by the Board.
I have comments, or?
Sure, your turn.
I also listened to the meeting. And it was my understanding that they opted to have this special meeting because they were under the understanding that today we were, we were going to make an appointment or something. I mean, there was, there was some urgency and, and some confusion, I will say, that we were going to try to make this appointment before their regular meeting and that they were just trying to accommodate us, is the way I took that. There was definitely a lot of confusion. And I want to say that a big piece of this, I think, is trying to conduct a Zoom meeting with maybe some folks, there's a little hostility in there somehow. And I, I don't know how that fits, but I'd hate to have us make any changes before we can give them an opportunity to have some regular meetings. And it doesn't look like we're going to make an appointment today because it's not on our agenda. And next week, we don't have a meeting. So it's going to be a couple of weeks. I think if we just let those folks know that we're not in a big rush, let's see if they can figure it out. Because I think the intention to do well is there. And as far as the applicants, I only know one of the applicants, and that was Mr. Shornow, who I was quite surprised was willing to step forward. And he is actually a farmer. He's farming over three hundred acres. He has for a long time, I don't know how long, but, you know, ten, twenty years. And I think he brings a lot to the process. And I would like to have a little time to talk with Stephen Bramwell because he's kind of our ex-officio member, if you will, and get his spin on it. He's from Washington State University as our extension agent. So, anyway, I see my seatmate has her hand up, so I'll forego that for now.
Go ahead, Commissioner Meehan.
Again, so, in, in terms of, of deadlines, at the previous meeting, when we all voted for, you know, to, or opted to wait for the recommendation of the Ag Advisory Board, we directed our Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis, to send forth the applications and for the Ag to make a decision since they had a meeting this week, to make a recommendation. So Amy Davis sent an email to staff that oversee that advisory board. Staff sent that email to the Chair of the Advisory Board. They also called him to let him know that the agenda item that set a special meeting for May twenty-seventh wouldn't be timely and if possible, if they could make a recommendation at their meeting, since the applicants were already going to be there to introduce themselves. The Chair acknowledged receipt of the email, but decided instead to continue on with the agenda as it was. So, the applications were sent out with the agenda. I received a copy of the applications as well as a copy of the agenda from the Board, from the Chair of the Board. And so, I went to this meeting and I saw the members introduce themselves. I actually asked Jessica Honaker, Jesse Honaker, to apply. I met her at the Southwest Food Hub, and I thought she would bring great insight to that. So she was actually my recommendation to apply to the Board. And honestly, from being there, it was very uncomfortable for new members. I, I mean, for potential new members. And, you know, what I'm trying to say is, there's, there hasn't been a special meeting before. I don't think the intention of the Board was for the advisory committee to set a special meeting to vet or interview these potential candidates. I think our intention was for them to discuss this at their regular-scheduled meeting. So, if we're going to allow them to set special meetings to vet candidates, then, you know, is that going to be the, the new norm for the rest of the commissions too? And when they do this, I mean, and let's say I'm recommending for someone to apply for an open position, or Commissioner Edwards, or Commissioner Mensah, I mean, will their recommendation go over the head of a commissioner? So, I'm, I was very frustrated at that meeting, just seeing everything that went down. And so I, I guess I'm looking for clear guidance on how the board, how the board wants to proceed from here.
Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
I guess, boy, there was a lot of confusion. I'll go back to the Zoom meeting. I, I got the, I don't know, the sense that they were trying to accommodate the recommendations that this board was asking for. And I think now that we're not, I don't think they need a special meeting. They can talk about it and see what they come up with. But I get a sense they've got a pretty diverse board and they have pretty good discussions. They got, they have a local attorney on the board and I listened to his comments and it sounded like they were trying to accommodate the county commission board. So I think once we get them notice that, hey, we're not in this big rush, go ahead, go ahead about your business and discuss the candidates and give us a recommendation, I, I think it can come back together. Now, I have to say, there seems to be some disruption that takes place because on these Zoom things, somebody says something, well, who was that? Somebody's got their hand up and that doesn't get seen. We end up with that same thing at our own commission meetings once in a while that, and so it is confusing. I hate to be judgmental when they're going through some pretty tough times and we're going to make some decisions here about opening meetings up. It sounds like that's coming up pretty quick. So I would just opt, we're not, we're not prepared to vote on anything now and it doesn't look like we're going to do it for at least three weeks. So let them figure it out and get back to us, I guess, and hopefully they can even have an in-person meeting at, at some point before we kind of jump the gun because I think there is some really, there's some dedicated folks on there. I know there's been confusion in the past about, and amongst our own board about who should be and who should not be, especially on the chair of that board, but the membership seemed to be pretty content. And there's a lot of other things that, there's some personalities that take place on there that, I don't know if there's some behind the scenes things going on from past activities that took place. So I would say, let's wait and let them see if they can iron it out and we can tell them, well, they don't need to have a special meeting to advise us. I think they were trying to accommodate us is the way I took it. I haven't talked to any of them as of late, so I just think they were trying to do what we wanted.
I don't see how.
misunderstood somehow.
Sorry, Commissioner, but I don't see how they were trying to accommodate us when, I mean, the special meeting is on May 27th, which is a couple of days from now and, you know, the recommendation was needed. So I, I don't see that accommodation piece that Commissioner Edwards is trying to say. In regards to Zoom meetings, I feel we've all been in Zoom meetings for over a year now. And, you know, there was a very specific incident that happened with me where I tried to speak to try to clarify some things and I got told, no, only committee members are allowed to speak. I decided not to argue, so I just sat there and I raised my hand and I wasn't acknowledged for a long period of time. And so there's, there's issues like that, that, that happened and I, I'm just trying to get some, a clear picture of where we're going to go from here because that was frustrating. I mean, I, how are we going to be, you know, actively recruiting for, for these positions and then we're going to take people to something like that? And, you know, and, and my response, I was very glad that, you know, Jesse Honaker even spoke up and she said, well, I'm, I'm, I'm here. If you have any questions, please ask them at this time. And, you know, it was kind of just this, this pushback and the confusion aspect, again, I'm not seeing when there was an email sent by staff with clear directions and acknowledgement of those and yet they were still not followed. So I, I just don't see how the accommodation comes in of they were trying to accommodate us.
So I, I just want to say that the, I think Commissioner Edwards hit it on the head to, to an extent when he said that there's personalities involved. And so from my perspective, what we need is some new personalities, not allies of existing personalities that are just going to further entrench the issues that are ongoing here. We need to get new, new, we need to get new folks from, from different parts of the community involved in this committee to get it straightened out. And so that's going to be my, that's going to be, whenever we take a vote on this and it really doesn't matter to me when we do it, but that's going to be my priority in terms of making a selection. I don't see any, you know, there's two non-farmer members and two non-farmer slots. I don't know if the board wants to go ahead and thumbs up those two and leave this last, if the farmer slot has two applicants for it. I, I, I'm not comfortable with the, with the agriculture advisory committee holding a special meeting to do this, but I don't know. But, you know, I certainly don't mind that they, that they discuss it and make, and give input. That's, that's not a problem for me. That's, that's what we ask them to do. That's what they typically do. But anyway, Romero, did you have a?
Yeah.
Pass forward here.
In, in terms of the, the options the board has, certainly you can delay any appointments as long as you, you, you wish. You can bring those appointments to this afternoon's meeting where you take an action. You can include it on the consent agenda. You can put it as a department item for you to exercise your individual votes. So what I'm hearing, there is a proposal. What I'm hearing is to consider appointments of Ms. McClure as well as Ms. Honaker to the non-farmer positions. I, I believe that's what I understand that proposes on the table. If the board wants to move forward with those appointments, then I will ask whether you want to take those actions this afternoon or you want to take those actions on June 8th. That will be the first question that I have for you. And then I have a follow-up on, on the whole conversation after you exercise your vote.
So there isn't really much input to give because there, there's only two applicants for two slots unless the board isn't comfortable. And I know Commissioner Mihia had problems in the past, but I'm not sure where we are now. We got the input. I personally would respect the agricultural advisory committee's comfort level with, with Ms. McClure since she's on the committee and there's no other applicant. But go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
I guess, I want to put a spin, a spin on it, I guess, of what I heard, kind of in, in defense of the chair, I guess. And, and what I'm commenting on is I heard that, that portion of the meeting in which Commissioner Mahia interjected and said she wanted to say something. And it, it was kind of what I heard there was the chair said, called, I think a different name. I think he thought it was somebody else. And maybe I've got it wrong, but as soon as someone brought it up, and that might have been Juddiah maybe brought it up at that point that, well, you disregarded the chair or the, the commissioner on having something to say and immediately when he was made aware of that, because he called, he said a different name. He thought it was somebody, and I don't, I don't even see the name on the list, but it was a first name. So I don't know if it was one of the guests that he thought it was or not. But then I think he tried to accommodate as soon as he was made aware that it was one of the county commissioners that had something to say about this. So it, it did, it was really a mix-up. And I, I'm good for making a couple of the appointments, I guess, kind of like the chair is. And then we can look at the others as they come up. But I do think that it was a confusing mix-up that they tried to accommodate us somehow and it, it sounds like there was some miscommunication. I don't know if it was between our staff people. Oh, who's, who's our staff person that, that helps out with the ag committee? Who is that?
Nicole Ross. There's Stevens, it does an ex officio member and Nicole Ross is.
So it's Steven and Nicole that are on there? Okay. And I don't know who it was. I'd have to review that tape again. But it was confusing and I just think we ought to give them a little bit of time to see if they can't figure it out and see what happens. I, I mean, we're not scheduled on the agenda to make these appointments. How does that work, county manager? If we didn't put it on our agenda and we take action today, does that mean we didn't post the right agenda and?
No, you, you, we are required. We're required to post the agenda 24 hours in advance, which we have done it. And you do have the option to amend the agenda prior you taking an action, which you have exercised that right in many, many occasions.
Okay.
And so that's what I'm asking the board, whether you'd like to include today, so today's agenda, the appointment of Ms. McClure and Ms. Honaker.
Okay, so we got something new from the ag committee today. This was just handed to me. So I think it came in today, is that right?
These are the emailed responses to the chair's request of the committee's vote on the reappointment of Gigi, of Ms. McClure.
In support of her reappointment.
Okay. Because that one doesn't seem to have any, anybody contesting it and the ag committee looks like they're in favor of it. At least nobody said nay against it. I would say, well, let's go ahead and make that reappointment and then figure out these other ones because they're all going to be new to the committee and let them figure that out and, and make a recommendation to us. So that's kind of where I'm coming from is.
So there's two, so there's two proposals here. I, I just want to make sure that we, we walk through these two proposals. The proposal is to go ahead with the appointments of Mr. McClure and Ms. Honaker, that's one. And the proposal from Mr. Commissioner Edwards is just to go move ahead with Ms. McClure appointment and not necessarily with Ms. Honaker.
Is, is Ms. Honaker a new appointment?
It is a new appointment to a non-farmer.
Okay. And I guess that's why I'm, that's, I guess, why I'm going that way. We've got a prior member looking for a reappointment. Sounds like we've agreed that, well, we're going to accept the recommendation of the group and the.
I, I don't know if that's true.
You don't know if that's true?
Commissioner Mihia on that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that is an agreement. This is the conversation that is happening.
Okay. Well, then, how are we going to figure that one out?
That's what I'm asking. There is two proposals. One is to move ahead with the appointments of Ms. McClure and Ms. Honaker. And I'd like the board to exercise the vote on that proposal.
Well, why do they have to be lumped together?
Well, because that's the proposal that I heard initially before your proposal, Commissioner.
That was the chair's proposal.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I made that proposal. I know Ms. Honaker's new, but given her qualifications and her recommendation from Commissioner Mahia, I, I don't need input from the ag advisory. There's no other applicant and she's.
So this is Commissioner Mahia's, Mahia's, okay, I'm good with it. Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
So if you'd like to bring those to today's agenda?
Commissioner Mahia, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm, I'm okay.
So, and, and those will be on your consent agenda, correct?
Yes, they could be on the consent.
Yep. And then we'll make a farmer recommend, or we'll make a dissection on the farmer slot at the next, next, next meeting time.
Can, can we be clear and ask them that they make a recommendation at their next advisory meeting and that they do not need to set a special meeting for this?
I, I agree with that.
So when is, when is the next, the regular meeting is on June 11th, I believe?
Their next regularly scheduled committee meeting is on Thursday, June 17th.
June 17th, so.
That's fine.
And I'm happy to pass along that information, that request.
If you want to wait until the, after that, really is, is what the board would like to do.
Yeah, I think we want to wait until after that meeting. It would be their normal meeting that they discuss stuff at, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That way they can have like a set agenda item and it's.
Yeah.
Okay, and could I follow up, Commissioner?
Yes.
So in, in, based on what I'm hearing on the agricultural advisory committee, I will be working with Amy and, and she will be attending the next agricultural advisory committee on the 17th. And she will facilitate a conversation as to remind the board members as to what the role responsibilities are because at the end, this is an advisory board to the Board of County Commissioners. And we have exercised that option on some commissions in the past. I myself have attended a couple of committees just reminding them what the role is. And I think this may be a good, a good opportunity for Amy to remind the board members as to what the, the purpose and intent and the role is as an advisory board to the Board of County Commissioners. So I'll work on that with Amy, so just to let you know.
Okay, I don't see, Amy, I've got a couple of advisory board issues. I don't see anything else on your sheet. Did you have other ones to bring to attention?
No, that was it.
Okay, so I've been, I wanted to make, I think I spoke with you yesterday, Amy, about I wanted to bring forward my nomination for the planning commission.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I'm proposing to reappoint the current chair of the planning commission, Jim Simmons, as my District Three. He's up, his term expires June 16th, so I'd like to have the board vote on it prior to June 16th. So that's why I wanted to bring it this morning so that you could consider that and then we could have it proposed for the June 8th agenda.
I, I'm good with it if you're proposing it and it's a re-nomination. I'm good with putting it on today's agenda. Doesn't matter to me. So I don't know where Commissioner Mahia is.
Yes, if it's your nomination, sir, then.
So since I hear unanimous, we'll bring that reappointment for today's agenda, on the consent agenda for today's meeting.
Yep, he's asked for reappointment and so I'm honoring that. Okay, the next one was, I, I believe according to Thomasina, this is another one that is a commissioner nomination, the historic commission. And I have an application for a District Three slot for Tamara Hayes. She is the former Southwest Washington Fair Manager and a former director of Discover Lewis County, but I, I guess she lives in Thurston County. And is that, and we, I know we have multiple vacancies on the historic commission.
I have a question, not about your nomination, but I have a question. I thought we were going to relook at the historic commission and kind of like revamp it because it was kind of confusion, confusing. So I, I was just wondering how that falls in and.
Yeah, I couldn't remember either frankly, but I.
Yeah, Amy and I are working on a follow-up briefing with the board. They will include the historic commission. I believe the, the housing, they have.
Yeah, housing authority.
Housing authority as well as for you to consider what we call a handbook for boards and commissions. All that will come in maybe in the next two weeks.
Few weeks.
Yeah.
So what's the default? I mean, I mean, then, then we're, then we're left with the old procedure, which is what? Just the board just considers as a whole?
Right.
So I, I would just let everybody, I'm not sure why her application's not in the packet, but I have it here somewhere that she's applied for the historic commission. We don't have to act on it today, but I just wanted the board to.
Is she, is it a re-nomination?
No, no, new, a, a new, a, a new member of the historic commission, which we're always looking for. Amy, do you have that?
I'm going to defer to the, my seatmate.
I do. I had passed it along to you, I believe, and if, and I, we can. And if, and I, we can include her appointment as well.
Why did you pass it to me rather than having it in the packet for the board to look at?
So the, in county code, it's worded a little funny. It does state that four members nominated by each county commissioner for your district.
So it was probably passed on kind of like the Planning Commission where the nominations or the applications are sent to each commissioner to appoint, and then we bring forward the nominations.
To nominate and then appointments are made by the full board.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, but then I was told that we're revamping the process. So I guess I just need to know what the default process is until we get something new.
Well, I guess we can just do that default process until we figure it out.
Okay, well, then I'm proposing Ms. Hayes and we can take it up at the next meeting, but I just wanted the board to hear that.
If that's your nomination, I'm ready to move forward on it as well.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Is there something going on on the Historic Commission that? I guess I'm not aware of any problem on the Historic Commission.
No, no, it was not a problem, if I may. It was a result of the conversation the board had on the planning session a couple months ago, where you review all the boards and commissions. And related to the Historic Commission, it was more related to the length of the appointment and more than anything else. I don't think it was any issues specifically you needed to address. It was more the structure as to how that Historic Commission was put in place and provide the board the opportunity to see any options as to how you want to revamp that portion of the Historic Commission. No issues, as I recall, it was discussed related to this commission. Related to the nomination, that was a process the board already agreed. And I think Commissioner Menzies is exercising that as well as Commissioner Mejia has already exercised that. That a nomination is brought by a board member and then the board will have a discussion on that nomination. So I believe that is in place.
Okay, I guess I do have a follow-up, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to make some changes to all, maybe we're going to do some reviewing on how we're doing business, it sounds like, coming up at some point.
On the Historic Commission and the Housing Authority.
Oh, just those two?
Yes, that's the conversation that you had on the planning session.
Remember the Historic Commission, it was very confusing. It was kind of, you know, it was like you have to be a real estate expert and have this much. It was kind of, the boundaries were really set where they were really confusing even for us. And so our conversation was like, well, let's kind of simplify it. That way we can get more membership in because probably the reason why people aren't really applying for this commission, it's because of just the regulations to be a part. I think there were, I don't remember what they were, but they were pretty stringent.
Yeah, the requirements were pretty high up there.
But we are going to adjust that at some point. And it sounds to me like the chair has a nomination he'd like to make under the current guidelines, I'm going to say. And if that's the case and the chair wants to make a nomination of a person that he feels comfortable with, I kind of go along with Commissioner Mejia and I'm okay with it, you know, type of a thing. We're going to review something here pretty quick, but does that mean that we shouldn't take advantage of a citizen that's willing to step forward and participate in a committee that doesn't have a lot of members, does it? I mean, it seems like there were some open spots.
Yeah.
Is that okay with Commissioner Mejia?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. That's.
So is that okay, Chair? I mean, if we go ahead with that now?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. That committee's been hurting for new members. And so this was actually somebody recruit, this was somebody recruited by one of the existing members as being, you know, somebody who'd be really well qualified. So I just wanted to take advantage of snapping that person up and getting them going.
I don't want to discourage any membership to our committees. So I'm all for going ahead with it.
Okay.
So you will see on today's agenda this appointment as well on your consent agenda. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager and Assistant County Manager. I have no updates that can't wait until next week.
Thank you, Brian. Pretty appreciate it. We're running a little behind here. Legislative update?
And no updates for you today on that, Commissioners?
All right, number, item nine, sub one, onsite sewage management plan, funding options.
Okay, so you'd like to have that conversation first or the treatment sales tax seems to be, the treatment sales tax may be a little more conducive at this point and then spend more time on the onsite sewage management plan, your option.
Yeah, that sounds good. Let's go to treatment sales tax.
Okay, so you got a briefing on May 19th. Carrie Henon, I think, is with us. And she provided a recommendation from the committee for the community grants. And as a reminder, there is a, the board has allocated $250,000 for community grants. And the proposal before you includes a little bit over that, $265,000. The proposal before you was to consider, oh, the committee before you was for Family Support Center of South Sound. Their request was $89,524 and the recommendation is to fund entirely 100%, I believe. The next is the YWCA of Olympia. Their request was for $46,180 and their recommendation is fully funding $46,180. The next recommendation was the Community Action Council, Lewis, Mason and Thurston Counties. Their request was for $100,000 and their recommendation is to fully fund their request for $100,000. The fourth is the Northwest Resources. Their request was $100,000 and their recommendation is to fund $30,000 out of that. You had a conversation with Carrie where you asked questions as to why the committee chose particularly number four, where number five and perhaps number six, they have higher scores. And that's how you left that conversation. And I believe Commissioner Menzies provided a recommendation at that point to consider funding, I believe, it was Catholic Community Services?
Family Education.
Family Education Center for $45,000. So at that point, I asked Carrie to give us a perspective as to what the budget capacity will be. And the conversation with Carrie is the board should have an additional $50,000 capacity that you may entertain, approving Commissioner Menzies' recommendation to fund $45,000 to Family Education and Support Services. That's my overview.
I have a question.
Okay.
Commissioner Mejia has her hand up.
Real quick, can I ask Carrie, is that anything else you want to put in upfront, Carrie, before we go to questions?
No, that was a good summary from the county manager.
All right, Commissioner Mejia.
So I believe Commissioner Menzies' recommendation, and this is just, if I was in a fever, Hayes, let me know. I believe Commissioner Menzies' recommendation was for Community Action Council to be 50 and then Family Education Support Services to receive that 50.
That's correct. And I was trying to stay on the budget that was proposed. And so that was my suggestion, just for discussion.
Okay. So and then just a follow-up question, if that's okay. But there's an extra $50,000 in the budget?
Yeah, you have that capacity.
Okay.
Commissioner Edwards?
This is for Robin. On the treatment sales tax funding, are we spending what's coming in currently? Is that the money that we're drawing from? And if so, didn't we have quite a bit more money come in on treatment sales tax than what came in during, well, '19? I know, because a bunch come in during '20. Wasn't there quite a change from '19 to '20? And do you know that dollar amount?
So I'm sorry, Commissioner, I've not received a current financial plan from the department, but I do recall when we created the budget for this year that sales tax, much like in the general fund, was coming in at a much higher rate than anticipated. I'm going to assume that that continues to be the fact. And that, as in other years, offices and departments did not spend the full amount of their appropriation. But I've not seen the financial plan, so I can't comment on the health of the fund.
But we're plenty healthy enough to do what's being proposed here, right?
I would absolutely assume that.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the pleasure of the board, I guess? We could, I guess, it sounds like what Romero was suggesting is that we could, we could fully fund the shaded items as proposed and add a $50,000 award to Family Education Support Service as the next highest scored applicant, if we wanted to do that. Is that?
Yeah, that, you have that capacity to do so. And I believe that was the proposal for the board to consider.
I would support that myself. Go to Commissioner Mejia.
Yeah, I would support that.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, okay, so very good. So you got what you needed, Carrie?
Yes, thank you.
So you will come back with an AIS for a formal allocation and awards? Is that the next step or what is the next step?
So contracts would begin July 1st. So I guess do I come with AIS for the allocation and then for the contracts?
To approve the contracts, yeah, based on those amounts.
So I can wait? Okay, so I can negotiate contracts and just bring those contracts?
Yeah, and then authorize session for the board to approve those contract awards.
Okay.
Right? And for Sally to sign it.
Yes. Great, thank you.
With 10% contingency.
We'll get on it. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, County Manager, what is the estimated length of time needed for our executive session?
That executive session may take only maybe 10 minutes, the most, I believe.
Can we go into that session then? And I mean, I don't think that onsite sewage management's going to take only seven minutes, so.
Yeah, your pleasure, Commissioner.
I don't think that it makes sense to get into that unless we're going to go well into the noon hour. Do we need to have that addressed today?
The septic or the?
Septic.
Yes, because that's a special Board of Health meeting that we schedule, but certainly you don't have to do it. And we can schedule another special session of the Board of Health for you to consider this.
I just don't, I was a little skeptical when I saw it on a Tuesday morning. I just don't think it's going to fit in a Tuesday morning, given the complexity of the topic. There's never been a septic discussion on this board that didn't last at least an hour.
Fair enough. You know, I guess my assumption of my approach was going to really walk you through the options and see where you want to go from there. But certainly if you like to schedule a more robust conversation, we'll schedule a formal briefing in the next week or so.
I think that makes more sense.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so I know the board is listening. So let's coordinate a board briefing to continue this conversation, maybe the next two weeks, Art?
Yeah, I'll get in touch with Amy and we'll do our best.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry you have to wait this long for this conclusion.
Okay, then let's jump to our executive session. We've got 15 minutes before noon, so I think that might, hopefully we can get that accomplished and then end roughly on time.
Yes. Let me see if I can, I invited Mary Hall to be part of this executive session, so I don't know if she's. Maybe Amy can send her.
Mary texted me and said she did not receive a Zoom link.
I will send her here shortly.
Oh, okay, good for you. Where are you going to be?
So we're going to be on Wood Street, down the highway.
That development has been there for a while, right? And pretty good-sized lots, if I remember right, compared to, yeah. So I think it's an ideal family place. Ground in the back of your house there, kind of.
Go ahead, sir, if you can set the.
Set it up? Okay. So the board, it's now going to move into an executive session pursuant to RCW 423110B to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. Specifically, building availability is the topic. Commissioner's action may follow. And we will estimate 15 minutes for this session. It's 11:46 AM.
Yeah, let me get all set up, sir.
Yep.